I'd like to formally call to order the August 8, 2022 City of Roswell Mayor and Council Workshop on the Discussion of the Five-Year Consolidation Plan. The city's consultant, Blue Licks Solutions, will be presenting information on the development of Roswell's next five-year, 2023 through 2027 consolidated plan, i.e. the CON Plan, that's C-O-N, CON Plan, and Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choices, forgive me, Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice Plan. The HUD required plans are prerequisites to the city receiving its annual funding under the Community Development Block Grant Program, otherwise known as CDBG. The CON Plan identifies community needs and provides a five-year strategy for how the city's CDBG funds will be used to develop community resources that address those needs. The AI will identify barriers to equal access to housing and propose strategies to overcome those impediments. Both plans require community engagement and public input, and Blue Licks will explain the process and timeline for gathering that information. And before I introduce our friends at Blue Licks Solutions, I would like to formally announce that Councilmember Lee Hills is with us today, Councilmember Will Mortland is here with us today, Councilmember Michael Palermo is here with us today, Councilmember Peter Vanstrum is here with us today, Councilmember Lee Hills is here with us today. I am, I'm sorry, Lee, forgive me. Lee, forgive me. Councilmember Christine Hall is with us.
Did you see to get us mixed up?
I know. You got the same color. Exactly. That shows you where I've been. I'm Mayor Kurt Wilson of the city of Roswell. I'd like, could like also introduce City Clerk Marley Press is with us. She'll be taking care of all the video and audio for us as well. Our Assistant City Administrator Michael Fisher is here today. Randy is not feeling well, so please keep Randy in your prayers. And our city attorney, David Davidson, joins us, so thank you. And with that, I'd like to introduce our consultant, Blue Licks Solutions. You have the floor. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. This is easier for me.
You may need to sit down because of the microphone.
I can hear it.
Yeah. And I failed to introduce the gentleman who handles the grants for the city of Roswell, Charles Offer. Charles, thanks for being with us today.
All right. Well, thank you guys for gathering here today to learn about this consolidated plan and the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. So these are the things that we will go over today. Just a brief overview of the consolidated plan. The AI is what we call the Analysis of Impediments. A CDBG overview, some eligible activities under the CDBG program, development of strategic priorities, development of the consolidated plan and action plan, and then the development of the AI. So, click to next slide. All right. So, under the consolidated plan overview, I think you did a wonderful job in explaining that. So, awesome. You know all about it already.
You guys better introduce yourselves.
I'm sorry. I'm Erica Fambro.
Hey, Erica.
And this is my partner, Kimberly Roberts.
Thank you so much.
Just to let you guys know, we've used Blue Licks several times. Kimberly and Erica have been God-sinned many a times. They actually did our last consolidated plan, and they worked for the team that did the consolidated, the first consolidated plan. They've also done an Analysis of Impediments for us, so they're very experienced, and we're very pleased to have them.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Thank you. So, back to the consolidated plan overview. Essentially, the consolidated plan is a five-year strategic plan that the city must prepare in order to receive your CDBG funds. In that plan, you will identify needs in the community, and we'll get into how we do that in a couple of slides. You will set priorities. We'll talk about that in a couple of slides. You'll determine what resources you have to address those needs, and then we'll set some goals on how we're going to meet those and when. The last two components in that circle there is administering your program, so that's after we've gotten done, you know, we've set the priorities, we've determined what we're going to do. Then we'll carry it out over a year, or two years, or five years. And then, at the end of each year, we report back to HUD how we're doing as far as meeting those priorities that we've set forth. And we do that in a document called the CAAPER. We won't talk about that here today. That comes at the end of the process. The other document that comes along when you're completing a consolidated plan, that's a five-year strategic plan, in that plan, there are five annual action plans. So your strategic plan says, these are our big overarching goals, and then that action plan is going to say each year, these are the things that we're going to tackle each year to meet those consolidated plan goals. And those are required by HUD in order for you to receive your CDBG dollars. And one thing to note, if you look at this big blue circle here, all of this requires citizen participation and consultation. So we reach out to citizens in the community, stakeholders, so this will be your nonprofits, your housing authorities, anybody that has a vested interest in Roswell. We talk to them so that we can really identify those needs.
And just to clarify, we're on the very front end of this.
Yes.
So we are just getting started in developing the plan, the timeline, so we wanted to kind of bring this to you guys first to kind of get any questions you may have.
Right.
And some of your constituents may also, you know, see some surveys or something around, and so they may, you may start to get questions as well.
Right. So we want you all to be in front of it. The Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice, so that's a lot of words, but it essentially is something that is, it's a plan that's required by HUD during this consolidated planning process, and it's something that we have to do to identify barriers to fair housing. So we want to make sure, a part of CDBG requires that we are distributing those funds without regard to race, color, religion, sex, national origin, and all of those things. So we have to look at any barriers that may exist in existing policies or just in the community in general. So it could be something that the city is doing inadvertently. If we identify those things, then what you are If we identify those things, then what you are charged with is proactively looking, how can we change that? How can we even the playing field so that everyone is given an equal opportunity and choice? So we do that by analyzing data, getting community feedback. You know, sometimes we have rules and laws and policies in place, you know, we think about it should be this way, but when it gets in action, sometimes it doesn't work quite as it was intended. And so, that's why your public participation, your public feedback will let you know, like, hey, you thought you were doing this, but it's really doing something quite different. And if you notice those types of things, then it's upon the city to make changes to even that playing field. There you go. All right, so there we go. So, so the funding that the city receives is called CDBG, Community Development Block Grant. So there are many different activities you can implement using these funds. These funds are designed to support building stronger, more resilient communities. So, we're looking at just making a community a better place for everyone. CDBG primarily supports low-income families, so that's the primary focus for the CDBG program. We are geared towards making effective change for that income population, okay? Some of the activities that we could do include things like public infrastructure, economic development, public facility, infrastructure, community centers, housing rehabilitation, public services, homeowner assistance, code enforcement. So there's a myriad of activities that we can undertake with the CDBG dollars to ensure that we are supporting those communities and making them more resilient, okay? So here we are again, just kind of in bulleted form, you'll see it. So when we talk about, let's just skip over to public facilities for a moment. So if we're talking about public facilities under infrastructure, you might say, what does that look like? That's your streets, your sidewalks, your water and sewer activities, neighborhood facilities. This would be like improving parks and playgrounds in low-income communities, or recreation facilities. So if you wanted to build a new community center or rehabilitate one, you could do that under the public facility activity. And then you have things like homeless shelters or group homes. If that's determined to be a need, you can use your CDBG dollars to, to improve those things. CDBG also allows for some public service dollars. What's important about this, sometimes, let's say, for example, you built a recreation facility, sometimes you need staff to run that, or some of your nonprofits may need some operating dollars to provide services. The public services category is a great opportunity for your nonprofits to be able to continue to provide the services in the community. So this could include things like childcare assistance, health education, any kind of senior services, recreation services. One caveat under the program is that you can only use 15% of your funds in this particular category. So, CDBG wasn't necessarily designed for this, but we know that that's an important part, so it's not gonna be very helpful to have a recreation facility and you have no staff to run it. So that's where that 15% comes into play. And it's important to know, under that category, that those funds are used for staff people that directly impact the low-income resident. So this wouldn't be for like executive directors and things like that, that would be a no-no. Anyone that's directly involved with the beneficiary, is what we call them, we could use funds to cover their salaries. Okay, so, the development of the plan, the consolidated plan and the AI. So, in this first year, in this consolidated plan, you remember I talked about the action plan? The action plan comes along with the CON plan in this first year. A lot of the research that we will do, a lot of the consultation that we will do, surveys and all of that stuff, it's synonymous between the consolidated plan and the analysis of impediments. They kind of flow hand in hand. So what we'll do is identify the community needs. We do that by stakeholder meetings, so we may meet with key persons in the community, focus groups, things like that, community hearings. This is when we meet with the residents to kind of get feedback on what they've been experiencing, what they identify as a need. Then we kind of compare that with surveys that we send out, and those surveys are sent out to whomever wants to complete it. This would be residents, this could be realtors in the community, this could be housing providers, it could be lenders, it could be city staff, it could be your nonprofit agency. So everyone, even though you don't live here, you can see some of the needs that are important in the community. So we take all of those kind of anecdotal things, and we marry that with empirical data, so you have your census data, FHEO data, CHAZ data, which is data that HUD has further reduced down to give us some, some insight to what's going on in the community. But what happens when you have the census data and the data from HUD, sometimes it lags behind what's really happening today, and that's where more of the anecdotal things come into play, and we can make some decisions about what should be a priority. So once we do that, we analyze all of that stuff, so that's demographics, housing data, legislation, we look at zoning, we look at land use, education, we look at mortgage lending patterns, we look at legal cases, complaints. So these would be like fair housing complaints that the city may have had over the last five years or so. We look at the education system, how outreach is working, and we use all of that data to come up with the strategic priorities. We determine our resources that we may have. One obvious resource is gonna be your CDBG dollars, but you may have other resources in the community that you want to put towards these efforts, and we recognize those as well. And then, once we do that, then we start to set some goals on what we want to do annually so that we can achieve some of these strategic priorities that were set forth.
I just want to make a point of reference. The consolidated plan is submitted to HUD, but the AI is not submitted by HUD or approved by HUD. It's a local jurisdiction requirement. If HUD was to come and monitor the city, they would ask to see a copy of your plan to make sure that you guys are doing it as every consolidated plan period comes around, but they don't approve it, they don't kind of get in the middle of approving what you can do to mitigate fair housing issues.
All right, so what's next? So we'll start with some kickoff needs assessment meetings. So there'll be some flyers going out once Charles and Blue Licks, once we decide on the particular dates. So you may see those around the community, you may have constituents that ask about it. They'll be able to call Charles and get more information. So we'll launch the survey, once we get the meetings kind of all squared away, we'll launch the survey. We're looking to get good participation. Last time, we got really good participation, so we're hoping that.
Four hundred surveys last time.
No, it was six hundred.
Oh, six hundred.
It was six hundred, which.
Very good.
A lot of times, for this and a jurisdiction this size, we don't get, you know, we may get eighty or fifty. So Roswell was really hitting it, they were after it.
Let me jump in there for one thing, and you guys have a copy of the English version of the survey, so.
It's top of the list here.
So kind of look over that, see anything that jumps out at you.
Right.
Before we release that. It's the same one we used the last, it's basically the same one we've used in previous years. And we do that in English as well as in Spanish. HUD requires you to make an effort to, make your best effort to reach limited English proficiency populations. So we usually will post that with the North Ford Community Charities, because they do a lot of Spanish-speaking individuals, but they'll also be done electronically online, so.
Right. Which is what we encourage. So that survey will be launched, and then, once we start to gather some information, we'll go ahead and start developing those strategic priorities, and then identifying any impediments to fair housing choice. We'll then start to draft the documents, and we'll present those at a follow-up meeting with you all, you know, to, to announce whatever findings, I shouldn't say findings, whatever priorities, because findings sound bad, right? So to address whatever priorities we have determined, and then any impediments that we could work on over the next five years. And then, another part of this process, it requires us to do a 30-day public comment period, so we'll put that out to the public, we'll have a public hearing with members of the community, and they can ask questions, they can say, hey, you know, this doesn't sound anything like Roswell, or hey, you hit it on the head, this is exactly what we are experiencing. And so that's the type of feedback that we look for. And then, you know, if something is just completely off-base, that's where we can go back and make adjustments and things like that. But it's all about getting input from the community, and we get input up until the very end. So then, we'll, once that comment period ends, we will finalize the documents and get those ready for submission to HUD. One thing, so we'll, we'll wait for HUD to announce allocations, and we'll send those, get those sent over.
Normally, the plan is due November 15.
Right.
But HUD is a little behind in announcing the allocation, so they don't want any plans before they announce the amount of money that the jurisdictions are gonna receive.
Right.
So this year, we got the allocations in May of 2022, for 2022.
So we're a little behind.
The last eight years, they haven't.
Yeah.
It's been April or May before they've allowed us to submit these plans. That's part of the reason why we've had trouble with our, deciding when to do our annual action plan, when we do an open application process. We do it when they supposedly do, we have them done by November 15, and then your nonprofits are sitting around, and their priorities are changing between May and whatever, and so we try to adjust that to help them a little bit. One thing I did want to note about the city meetings, just so you guys are aware on, the stakeholder meetings, we had looked at doing five meetings. One would be with nonprofits, one would be the City of Roswell Department Heads, we do one with the public housing residents, and then we were looking at doing a citywide resident meeting on the west side and one on the east side, to kind of meet everybody's needs there, so. Got any thoughts there? Just so you know. Sounds good.
Good. This would be the survey, so this is what will go out to the community, so they'll be able to click a link if they're on their computer, they want to take the survey on their phone, they can click the QR code there. So that makes it a lot easier for people to participate. I mean, most people aren't walking around with their laptops.
They can have a phone.
Exactly. So, this, this is also included on that flyer, so, Charles?
Yeah.
They'll be calling.
If you guys have any questions, this is the big, big point of this meeting, is just to kind of give you a brief everything and let you have any questions.
Thank you, it was very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Awesome.
Very helpful. I will tell you, this council, you know, you guys have a, this council probably is very capacity. You're all served.
Right. Yes.
But this council, really from day one, January 2nd, spent a lot of time getting up to speed on CDBG. Really got into the details.
Sorry, I'm supposed to be on microphone. This council did an amazing job to a man and woman, really getting up to speed on CDBG. They really did their homework, really wanted to be faithful to what they understood, what the intent of CDBG was, very proud as, as one of their colleagues of the amount of time they invested, and were very intentional about it, and was trying to do it right. So, I think the, I think our residents would be very proud if they knew how hard this council worked on really trying to be faithful to CDBG. I'm sorry, Councilmember Palermo, you had something to say. Councilmember Vanstrom, this is gonna be mix-up day for me, isn't it? Councilor.
Air, air.
Yeah, I got it. Your floor is yours, Peter.
Just for clarification, if you could, and, and thank you for a great presentation. I really appreciate you guys being here. When we get to, you were talking about, and maybe we just go back in the slides, it was early on, the public services, you divided that, yeah, public facilities. You mentioned the 15%. Is that, that's for a nonprofit? Is that, is that a ceiling of, of what they can have of the pot, 15% each?
No.
Or 15% total?
It's 15% of the grant. So if you wanted to fund three organizations, they would have to split 15% of that grant.
Okay, just wanted to verify, make sure I was clear on that.
And that's a federal regulation for the CDBG.
Okay.
Yeah, so Peter makes a great distinction, which I think was not historically well-known in the city, was that the city did not have the right to take 100% of CDBG funds and disperse that at 100% level to private charities, no matter how great those private charities were. They could distribute 15% of the CDBG funds at most in total of the, a total CDBG allocation to, to private charities.
Well, to, for, for public service.
For public service.
Yes. If those charities were asking for funds for a facility improvement, then that would not count towards.
That would not count. That's a great distinction. Thanks, Erica. Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, thank you for walking through this, I appreciate it. Now, can you just remind me, is this the same, same process we went through five years ago? It's just basically the same?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
Every five years, you gotta do it all over again.
That's what I figured, I just, yeah, I was just curious. And then also, is this, is this something where, so I guess a lot of our neighboring cities don't have, or don't run a CDBG process, or they don't, they don't receive funds, in which case, they don't go through this process? But any of our neighboring cities that does receive CDBG, they go through this exact same process?
Yes, and so that would be your neighboring cities, your neighboring counties, and even the state goes through a similar process. So even your neighboring cities, they may get funding through the county.
Gotcha.
Can I follow up on your question, Michael? That's a really good question. So just for edification, so that everybody understands kind of the lay of the land, for example, Alpharetta does not participate in this process, correct?
Correct.
Johns Creek doesn't participate in this process, correct?
I think they're a new entitlement.
CDBG entitlement, maybe in the last couple of years.
Okay.
Recent, very, very recent.
Milton does not participate in this process.
I don't think they get CDBG.
Because it's based on population.
It is.
And it's based on the city's population, and if they choose to become an entitlement. So, it doesn't force it on the jurisdiction, it's whether they choose to participate, because there are strings with this money.
So the city has to choose to become an entitlement city?
Yes.
There's not a designation of being an entitlement city?
Once you accept it, they'll give you money every year, but that first year, you have to accept that you want to participate in the entitlement funding.
If you could elaborate on what strings mean.
Okay.
Strings.
Yes.
Sorry, Christine Hall.
That's a requirement.
Yes.
So, these are federal funds, and there is a high level of accountability for the jurisdictions that accept this funding. If a nonprofit, the city was to give a nonprofit funding and they mismanage those funds, ultimately the City of Roswell is on the hook for repaying HUD those dollars, not that nonprofit. So there is some risk there. There is some monitoring required by the jurisdiction to make sure everyone's doing their part, there's some tracking, there's reporting.
There's some tracking, there's reporting, there's annual reporting, there's documentation, file documentation. Any nonprofit has to keep client files with social security cards, IDs, income verification. And if they're not documenting that, those, to make sure they're eligible population, then that's going to trigger repayment by the city. So ultimately, the city is responsible for this money.
So the city has to have the resources financially to support a CDBG program? In other words, they have to administratively have somebody dedicated, or people dedicated, to say, we are in compliance with what your request are, HUD, in terms of the CDBG program. So the city has to be prepared to spend money, to get money under the CDBG program.
Yes. But you can, there's 20% of the CDBG dollars that can be used for admin to pay the salaries for the staff working on the program. So you can take money out of the grant to pay for the program.
Right.
How long has Roswell been an entitlement city and part of the CDBG program?
10 years.
10 years.
10 years. This will be our 11th year, starting with this plan here. And so that's why I was hired, was to oversee that and to use the administration funds you're talking about to pay about 80% of my salary.
Do you remember what triggered that to occur?
That I do not know. Wish Danny was here. He might, were you here, Michael? David's shaking his head.
It had to be the city's population.
Yeah.
Triggers HUD to say, hey, Roswell's now eligible, because they do some formula calculation annually. And when Roswell's population hit a certain number, and I think it might be 50,000.
50,000.
You're now eligible to receive CDBG funding.
Well, we were a sub-receptioner under Fulton County for a long time.
Of the home program funds, right?
And.
And CDBG, okay.
And so, I guess, 11 years ago, the city decided they need to break away from Fulton County and found out that we were eligible as an entitlement city to collect funds ourselves. And to the population concept is, sometimes the, Johns Creek's not as big as Roswell. Sometimes that certainly plays into the amount of money you can get. And thus, the viability of hiring somebody to oversee the program, because we were big as we were, you know, we were able to get 400, $450,000 a year. So I think that played into our ability to do it. Versus, say, like Milton, even if they were eligible under Fulton's program, or if they ended up being eligible at the baseline population, would it be enough money to justify them hiring somebody to oversee it?
And kind of generally speaking, as we look through the 10-year history of the CDBG program with Roswell, it's been approximately $450,000 a year, generally speaking, CDBG funds. And 20% of that goes to pay, obviously, it goes towards administrative to pay the salary internally here at the city. Councilmember Hills?
Yes. So I know you, ladies had mentioned, let me get it straight here, that once the public comment and, I forget what you call it, open houses and that gathering. So that way, you identify either impediments or needs or outcry, or however that comes in. So I'll come back to that in a minute. How did we stack up? When, like, how does that work? We're finished five years. We, four of us at the table came in brand spanking new. So we did a speed date on CDBG, CDBG. Thank you, Charles Alfred. Did I say, thank you, Charles Alfred? So how did we stack up on that? Because we had more questions than we had answers, I think, even our veteran council members. Because maybe it's always been done away. So we were asking a lot of newbie questions, which I think opened the door to us, to a lot of opportunities for us to be able to serve people that were in need, that may or may not, may not, have representation in our community. So how did, when do we find out if, and who lets us know if we've been inadvertently causing an impediment? Or if we have missed the mark, or, because, I'll speak for myself, but representing four new people here, like, that's not what we want to do. We want to serve our residents really well and also fulfill the mission behind this grant opportunity. So first of all, how did we stack up on the five-year? And was that something we were told five years ago when we submitted our AI and our con plan? And then how do we go forward with that? So I, I don't know. Sorry about that. Go, go.
So annually, when you're talking about the consolidated plan and those strategic priorities and the goals that you set annually, so we do that in an action plan. So that's what we decide, how we're going to use the money each year. And then after that, each year, you do what's called a CAPER. So this one right here, evaluating performance. So every year, the city has to submit that to HUD at the end of their grant year. And it tells you, these are the priorities and goals that you set, and these are the ones that you've completed. It tells you how far along. So if you, let's say, for example, you said you were going to serve 500 people over the course of five years. And in year one, you serve 100 people. It's going to show that. For year one, we kind of met our benchmark, and we have 400 to go, and we have four years to go. Now, some years, you may not measure up. What we're looking for is that, at the end of the five years, you get close to what you're doing, what you're, what you've set out to do. And then, it's really the same with the analysis of impediments. But in that particular one, there's no reporting tool. So you report some things in your CAPER. You can keep some things locally to see how you're measuring up. And I think part of your other question was, how do you know? So once we, if you go forward, I'm just going to show her, oh, forward. Keep going, oh, back. Okay, so you see here, analyzing compiled data. So when we get to kind of in the weeds of things, we'll look at zoning policies. We'll look at land use and things like that. And we'll look at any kind of housing market data to see, like, wait, in this particular area, you know, pricing is out of control or many people are being discriminated against. So that's when we look at, like, mortgage lending data. We can say that, you know, 80% of low-income people live in this area and 90% of discrimination also happens in this area. So we'd be able to look at some things like that. Usually, it's not that glaring. These are just for examples. Say, sometimes zoning issues can be a problem. And that's, we'll take a look at those. Those are sometimes an issue because it didn't intend to be a problem, and sometimes it ends up being a problem just by the nature of, you know, the location of where something is. Like, say, for example, a really good example is, let's say, for example, you say all low-income housing has to be on this side of the railroad track. And all of the public transportation is on this side of the railroad track. You maybe didn't make that rule based on this transportation. But if low-income people use public transportation, you therefore made it difficult for them to access that service. But you didn't do that on purpose. You had another legitimate reason why all should be over here. So it's just those types of things that we take a look at to see if those things are happening. If they're not, then kudos.
And we'll come back and present the findings.
Does that, I'm guessing, Mr. Alfred, that comes through you as well? You kind of keep an eye on that and then communicate with them?
So, yeah. So just to answer, like, the performance goals for beneficiaries, like, our CAPER doesn't always match up with the way HUD wants it to come out and the way our program is running, because it's always behind, because they released the data late. I won't know until how we, our beneficiary data succeeded or didn't succeed until this next year. So we'll run it for the full five years. And I'll send that to you. But the, the last time we did the analysis of impediments in terms of, I remember the, what is the board you guys got to go to to see how many complaints have been filed or whatever?
Oh, the FHEO.
Okay. So they submitted that, and it wasn't them particularly, it was another consultant. And I don't think we had any major issues. So we didn't have any major issues there.
On FHEO data?
Yeah, right.
So I think Lee was asking, if I heard Lee correctly, forgive me, Lee, if I'm interjecting and overstepping. I think she was asking, because this is what she discovered and the rest of the council discovered was, they took a very literal perspective of CDBG. They read the program and got very literal and said, okay, we want to make sure we comply with this. And they said, it doesn't look like that we're supposed to be serving, sending dollars to people who aren't Roswell residents. It looks like we're supposed to be serving Roswell residents. I think that's where Lee was going. How do you know and how do you comply with that? Because that was the intent of this council, was, how do we make sure we're serving Roswell residents? Because we think that's what CDBG is telling us. And it looks like, and if we're not doing that, are we really being faithful to what we think these CDBG dollars are going to? I think that's where she's going with that.
Yes.
And so how do you know that? And how do, and that's kind of our question.
Well, it's a couple of different ways. So if you're doing those public service-type activities where you're serving actual beneficiaries and actual person is coming to you for a service, then you're going to be checking residency, checking IDs. Maybe they would have a utility bill that they would have to show to prove that they live here in Roswell. Then, on the other side, like with those public facility activities, those, let's say, for example, if you were going to do a public infrastructure project, then it's going to go for the residents who live in that particular community. So that would be a slam dunk. And it should be within the city limits.
And if that's not occurring, how do you know that's not occurring and what's happening as a consequence of?
The sub-receptioners would give funds to nonprofits. They have to submit progress reports to me so I can report it back to data, or, excuse me, back to HUD and record the data back to HUD. Our application, I think it was Jerry Orleans, was adamant about it only serving Roswell residents. So that was something that we put up out front. So if it's a service project and they say we provided scholarships, the YMCA, which is located in Alpharetta, they know that the scholarship funds that we're reimbursing from, it's a reimbursement grant. So they paid for it upfront, and then they sent us the reimbursement as well as the data for the people they serve. Those people have to be from Roswell. So from a service standpoint, the only way it gets into a gray area is like, for instance, like, we do something for Northwood Community Charity. If you build a public infrastructure, we do the parking lot or something like that. We can't control it. It does benefit some people from other places.
Well, I think that's kind of where this council got confused on this whole process. Because I said, it looks worth about $450,000 a year. It's federal money. It's entitled money. It's a very complicated program. You have a designation as an entitlement city, which I don't think most residents in Roswell realize that Roswell is designated as a federal entitlement city. $450,000, and if you get $450,000, are you alleviating burden to the residents, taxpayers, the property tax owners who are providing the services for the city? Are you doing something to offset that, that's making a meaningful difference to the residents of Roswell? Whether they're rich, middle-class, or poor, are you doing something to positively impact the outcome to your residents? And so I have questions on whether that $450,000 is impacting anything. And one, I don't think it's alleviating the tax burden to my residents. And two, I'm not sure what I'm doing necessarily that's of great value for the bang and the buck of how much there is in this program. This is a very complicated program that comes with a lot of strings and attachments to it. For $450,000, it's not $4.5 million a year. I can't go build a community center. When you put up a community center, I go, I love to build a community center. That's awesome. That would be cool. Like, give me $4.5 million, and maybe those strings start becoming worth it to the residents of Roswell. I'm concerned that $450,000, which is the historical average, really is a lot of strings attached to the city that's not, we're not really providing any great benefit to a lot of people. And questionably, I think the challenge that the council discovered this year was, a lot of the people that the CDBG funds were serving were not Roswell residents. And if Roswell residents discovered that, they would be really mad. Like, why are you spending money, federal money, through a very complicated federal program, and it's not even going to Roswell residents? Some of it is, but some of it is not. Roswell residents would be furious with us. So I will tell you, I have real questions about the program because it's a lot of hoops you have to jump through for $450,000. A lot of hoops. And I'm not so sure that we're making a difference with that $450,000 to the people that we're intended to serve. I think this year, this council made a very practical and smart decision on the water pipes, to fix water pipes to low-income residents who needed it. It was an infrastructure issue. I think it was very wise. And this council received massive criticism because it took the money away from charities who have the ability to raise money. And we love every one of those charities. I give to some of those charities. I believe in the mission of those charities. This council believes in the mission of those charities. But this, to say, we're getting in the business of doling out $450,000 to this charity and that charity, and it becomes like a public salvage game, and the money's not even going, in many cases, to Roswell residents. I think Roswell residents would be furious with us if they actually understood the true manifestations of this program. I really do. And so I, I think this is a question that we've got to decide quickly as a body on what is the future of CDBG for the City of Roswell? Is it something that we continue to want to be, a city that is considered a federal entitlement city? And is that in alignment with what the Roswell residents elected us and want us to do? And is it worth it for $450,000 a year to receive that money? And are we ensuring that it is going to benefit Roswell residents? And I think that's a real question that is before us today. Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. And thank you for really addressing that. I mean, that's the, that's the question. The question I have is, under the HUD exchange program, you also have housing authorities. And there is a housing authority in Roswell. Would they be able to directly apply for CDBG grants? It has to be through a city?
I will say too, there is, in measuring the performance, the city is mandated to meet a timeliness on expending these funds annually. It's called a 1.5 test date. And the city has to not have no more than 1.5 times your annual allocation in the US Treasury. And so that is one way that HUD measures if the jurisdiction is meeting their requirements and is spending the money as needed. Another one is monitoring. HUD comes out and they monitor the city. So they're going to be looking at client files. They're going to be looking and making sure that the city is serving its population that it needs to serve. And so that's why the city also should do internal monitoring and monitor those nonprofits at the same time, before HUD comes out.
Right.
But the housing authority can't apply directly to?
No, not for CDBG.
Not for CDBG, you know what I'm saying? Sorry. Unfortunately, I'm going to.
Way up to speed on this issue. Much more than I ever would care to, and because we've been trying to find solutions for our housing authority and define funds for our housing authority and define ways to solve that, not just from the City of Roswell's funds, which we're going to do, which Roswell residents are going to come in and save a federal program. Think about that. We're going to ask the taxpayers of Roswell. It's what we're going to do. We're going to ask the taxpayers of Roswell to come in and save a federal program. Think about, that's crazy, isn't it? I mean, that's what we're going to come in and do. Just because this council wants to do the right thing as much as it can in every possible chase it can, no matter what they have to do. Yes, sir. Councilmember Morton?
So, looking forward, and we're going to use the $450,000 example, year after year, that's basically the average. If we are doing everything that we're supposed to do, which are hitting all the metrics on these reports, and we're doing where we're supposed to be, is there a way that we would come in and lose funding in the coming years through no fault of our own? We're hitting all of our metrics, but let's say Congress has slashed funding in the future. Let's say other things have happened that are beyond our control. Can you touch on some of those examples?
The Congress appropriations for CDBG, every year, new entitlements come into the fold. And so that pot of money gets smaller and smaller and smaller. And in any event, if Congress decides they want to eliminate the entire program, then all of the CDBG funding can be cut. So that's always a risk as well. It's no guarantee that every city will get the same amount you got last year. We've went through fluctuations in the allocations. We've went through fluctuations in the allocations for years now. It just depends on what HUD and Congress decides to do for any particular year, and who's in, who's the president.
But I will say, even like over the last 10 years, it's been relatively stable. So, you have some dips and some, you know, some peaks. But for the most part, it's relatively stable.
CDBG has stayed much more relative than, for example, HUD's program to fund affordable housing. So, one of the, one of the little known stories out there, as a, all of us in here are federal taxpayers. And I've become, again, intimately familiar with something I wish I didn't have to become intimately familiar with as a public servant. The way that housing authorities, basically, the affordable housing program is getting funded is through private market capitalization, right? Because HUD doesn't have the money. And so, it's gotten very inventive, very creative, and very complicated. It's amazing. And so, to your point, HUD didn't have the money. So, the market, it went to the marketplace under a very inventive and creative and complicated program. It's one of the reasons our poor housing authority has struggled underneath the last deal. Didn't work out so well for our housing authority. And we're left with trying to figure out, how do we make that financial, that, which we don't have any purview over? You know, that's one of the challenges, right? We don't have, we have no purview over CDBG. Roswell residents have no purview. We have no purview over the housing authority, none, not legally. So, well, are there any other questions, thoughts, or comments from councils? Councilmember Hills?
This was just clarification. When you were talking about the surveys and outreach in the community, and I may have misunderstood this, from lenders, from realtors, from residents, and I thought you said people not in the community.
They can be working here, but not living here. So, we want their opinion if they're coming in and out, but they are, they have a, you know, they have some kind of connection to Roswell.
I was just trying to size that up. If we had people that might have a certain idea about what they, outside of Roswell, that don't work here, don't live here, and weigh in on surveys. I mean, I know you've got 600, 800, you know, that's not millions, but we're not your only game in town, I'm sure. But I was just curious how that plays in, if we had folks from outside Roswell, where we're trying to take care of our city and our residents.
We have 140,000 daytime residents, daytime visiting population, out of 94,000. We call ourselves 100,000, or technically, we're 94,000. We're fourth in Fulton County, but we have 140,000 daytime visitors. And to your excellent point, Councilmember Hills, exactly. If I'm one of those daytime visitors, and I work as a server at 1920, right? And you interview me, and you ask me about housing, and I live in Decatur, right? It's not illogical to say, "Oh, sure, I'd love to live in Roswell," right? And the consequences are that, but I can't afford to live in a house in Roswell. I can afford to live in an apartment in Decatur, not a house, that's where I live, and I'd like to live in a house in Roswell. Well, that's right, that's why it's an aspirational city. It's a place where you aspire to move to. It's an unbelievable suburb that you aspire to move to the city of Roswell. But you're going to answer that question, I think specifically to the point of the survey, is, "I would like to live in Roswell, but I can't afford to live in Roswell." That's a true statement. I want to live there, and I can't afford to live it. And the challenge is, that's going to show up as ding, right? It's a ding, you got dinged, you didn't provide affordable housing. And that's not the full story. The full story is, that person lives in an expensive apartment in Decatur. They live in a $1,400 a month, $1,600 a month apartment. They'd like to live in a $1,400 or $1,600 a month apartment in Roswell. And what we'd say from a zoning perspective is, we have, we have 65% of our square mileage is already in single-family housing. We have a significant amount of multifamily. But we've made a commitment that this city's going to be 120,000 people in 20 years, not 200,000 people, which means we are not going to grow housing at an incredible rate. The only way to grow housing at an incredible rate, which some people would believe in, is to grow it through multifamily housing. However, the misnomer there is, which this is the misnomer to all this, is if you created large dots of multifamily housing in the city, which is the gist of the entire discussion that this council came to election on and came to terms with. If you did that, the great irony, and the great false narrative is, it would not be affordable housing. It would be incredibly expensive housing. There would be $3,000 apartments, and $4,000 apartments, and $2,500 apartments, which the vast majority of people who would fill out that survey would say, "But I want to live in Roswell." So, you get ding, 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 ding. And yet, $450,000, I can't really do anything to alterfully change the scope of that, of the nature. I can get criticized for it, but I really can't affect change in a positive way. So, for me, it's a, this is a conundrum.
And I will say, CDBG is very flexible in what you can do. It's not necessarily all geared toward affordable housing, but those services are important as well. But one of the key aspects of CDBG is, if you are entitlement, you have an access to what they call a Section 108 loan, where you can borrow against your CDBG allocation and get five times your allocation in one lump sum. And so, if you had a nice impactful project, it could work with CDBG dollars, and you could really make an investment. So, that gives you that access. But you've got to have a plan, you've got to have some kind of, like, goal for community development. But it is very flexible, just kind of think, you've got to think outside the box.
Is that just infrastructure, though, or is that physically building? Can that be applied toward building?
Building a public facility, building...
Economic development.
A fantastic community center. It could be economic development. We've seen the city of Columbus, they repurpose, I think, what's some tobacco warehouses right down the river. Repurposed it, brought in a lot of jobs, and those jobs hired low-income persons to come in and work and, you know, have a salary.
Yeah, I think it's a customer service facility, so.
Well, we're wide open to any cool, creative solutions that will help, that will be of value to those who need it. I mean, we are wide open on that. And, but we also want to ask hard questions of ourselves. And I think that, I'm really proud of this council, because I think they're willing to do that. And it's not easy. I mean, it's not. This is not a climate where this kind of thing's easy to do, but I'm very proud of these people. Councilmembers, any other, any thoughts? Charles, yes, sir.
I just wanted to clarify, on the, on the survey, we can delineate by zip code. So, if you get a bunch of people, like you said, that don't live in the city, that have, you know, a certain opinion about something, you can break that out. And the con-plan allows you to explain that. If anybody has any problem with that, go, "Oh, you got X amount of people say you need these type of apartments." You go, "I'm sorry, but we don't, we're looking at these other things as higher priorities than what they are." So, we do structure the survey so you can have some wiggle room there.
Well, Charles, I want to tell you, I know how hard you work. I know how much you do for this city. And I want to tell you personally, and I know I speak on the rest of, for my colleagues, we appreciate what you do, and I think you do a great job for our residents. And I want to tell you, ladies, I can't tell you how much, we appreciate you coming here, being with us, your excellent presentation, for sharing your information and taking our questions. Thank you so much. We are honored that you're here with us. Thank you, and thank you for what you do for our community and for others. Thank you very much. And we look forward to seeing you again.
Of course.
I guess, if there were no other thoughts or questions from council, this workshop on the discussion of the five-year consolidated plan is officially adjourned. Thank you so much.